Hey. Jerem, Milton, Pauls. Mr. President.
Please stand or remain standing for the pledge and mitigation by Councilmember Richard Pauls.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon. I think I'm going to quote Larry Truman, and maybe sometime we could use that ourselves as a counsel. It is amazing how much you can accomplish if you don't care who gets the credit. So let's do something today. Thank you.
City Clerk certified publication of the day record on April 18th, notice for appeal counsel and regular city council meeting April 22nd, 2014. A current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it's not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic device.
Zoning ordinance on final ring planning board attachments will take items five and six as one case. Five is ordinance to rezone property located northwest of 13th and Nicholas Streets from Heavy Industrial District to Central Business District. Six is ordinance to amend the boundaries of the area of Civic Importance Overlay District to incorporate in that district the property located northwest of 13th and Nicholas Streets. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearings on items number five and six are today. Are there any proponents? See none, any opponents? Public hearings are closed.
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Thompson, Gurnat, Gray, Jerem, Milton, Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Five and six are passed. Seven to zero. Item number seven, ordinance to rezone property located at 4129 Lake Street from General Industrial District to R5 Urban Family Residential District. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number seven is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
We approve.
Roll call.
Thompson, Gurnat, Gray, Jerem, Milton, Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Passed, seven to zero. Resolutions for preliminary plats. Item number eight, resolution to revise preliminary platent titled Highland High Hills, formerly known as Highland Ridge, located northeast of 168th and Ida Streets. Long attached conditions hereby accepted in preparation for final plat is hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number eight is today. Proponents, please. Mr. Doyle.
Good afternoon. Brian Doyle, Fullon Camp Doyle and Jovan 11440 West Center Road. Also here with me is John Coolidge from Lampoon Neers, the lead engineer for the project, available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Other proponents? See none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Motion approved.
Second. Roll call.
Thompson, Gurnat, Gray, Jerem, Milton, Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted, seven to zero. Item number nine, resolution preliminary plat entitled Elk Ridge Replat Eight, located east of Elk Ridge Drive and Sewer Streets. Long attached conditions hereby accepted in preparation for final plat is hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number minus today. Proponents, please. Mr. Jovan.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. On this one, actually, I had request like a 30-day layover. There's a couple of technical issues that there's no opposition to it, but there's a couple of technical issues that I think we have to take care of first. I'd like to make sure that we can get taken care of before you actually approve the plat. So with that, if you can lay this over, and we'll come back in 30 days.
Four weeks.
Four weeks would be fine.
Five twenty.
So moved. Thank you.
And continue the public hearing.
And continue the public hearing.
Thank you. Other proponents today? See none, any opponents? We have a motion, a second, to lay over four weeks and continue a public hearing. Roll call.
Thompson, Gurnat, Gray, Jerem, Milton, Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Lay it over four weeks, seven to zero. Item number 10, resolution that preliminary plat entitled Skyline Country Third Edition Replat Two, located at 20516 Nicholas Circle, is hereby accepted in preparation for final plat is hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number 10 is today. Are there any proponents? Mr. Thielen.
Jason Thielen, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 330 North 117th Street, here on behalf of the applicant. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Other proponents, please. See none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Thompson, Gurnat, Gray, Jerem, Milton, Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted, seven to zero. Item number 11, I'm going to take out of the pursuant rule because we need to have motion to return to planning. 11 is a resolution for preliminary plat entitled Dylan's Saddle Creek, located at 888 South Saddle Creek Road. Long attached conditions hereby accepted in preparation for final plat is hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Motion approved.
Second. Roll call.
Thompson, Gurnat, Gray, Jerem, Milton, Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
It's returned to planning. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, agenda item number 12, shall lay it over two weeks for publication in public hearing. Liquor, item number 13, Mula's Mexican Kitchen in Tiqueria, 3932 Farnum Street, Class C liquor license, new application, new location. There is communications from planning. If you wish to grant this, you need to grant contingent on getting their permits for their outdoor area.
Public hearing on number 13 is today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Michael Sanchez, owner of Mulan Incorporated, 3932 Farnum Street. Asking that you guys grant this liquor license for me. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? See none, public hearings closed. Mr. Jerem.
Michael, you want to come back up?
Sure.
Now's your chance to give a little plug for your new place there on 40th and Farnum. So why don't you tell us a little bit about what your place is going to be, when you're going to open?
Appreciate that, Chris, Mr. Counselor. So right now, I own a Mexican restaurant called Maria's Mexican Restaurants in downtown Rawlson. We've been operating, my family's been operating there for about 40 years, and we are branching out into a new type of Mexican food. We're calling it street-style Mexican food, and it also is going to include a tequila bar, full-service tequila bar, which will educate people on the spirit of tequila, which in my opinion is underserved in the city of Omaha and misrepresented. So we are going to serve a kind of a reinterpretation of food that you would find in these market city streets of Mexico.
And about how many employees we have there?
Between 20 and 30, depending.
I just bring this up because this is, I believe, the first of what's to be some more coming down the pipeline in the Blackstone District, the BID that we passed. And it's, I, you must have been gone yesterday, but I did go through the place and there's people working hard, and we look forward to you being a valuable addition to the neighborhood. So good luck to you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I'd make a motion approve, subject to getting the proper permits from planning.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Yes, just out of curiosity, what is an example of a misunderstanding about tequila?
I think it's misrepresented. In this city, if you wanted to get an education on tequila, I would be hard-pressed to find a place where you could do that. You can go to a Mexican restaurant where there's a lot of tequila bottles on the shelf, but not a lot of places where you can go and actually get educated on the spirit from beginning to end, how it's grown, how it's distilled, the nuances and the complexity of the various tequilas. So I have yet to find a place in this city that offers that sort of experience. We want to be the first and the best.
So you want it to be more than just a wild man's drink?
Yeah, well, I think we all have those college stories or that one story with tequila, and we want to kind of derail that misconception about tequila because it's much more than that.
Okay. I look forward to the sophistication of tequila.
I don't mind the misconception myself.
I'm not too much.
All right. There's a motion, a second. Roll call.
Thompson, Gurnat, Gray, Jerem, Milton, Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted with the contingent, seven to zero. Item number 14, Omaha Ballroom, 5038 South 153rd Street, Class I liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on number 14 is today. Proponents, please.
Hello, Elizabeth Edwards, Omaha Ballroom, 5038 South 153rd Street. I'm here to answer any of your questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? See none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just curious, is there a daycare pretty close to this?
There is, but when we're serving liquor, it'll be when the daycare is closed.
In the evening?
In the evening and on the weekends.
Okay. Thank you.
No further lights.
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Thompson, Gurnat, Gray, Jerem, Milton, Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted, seven to zero.
Thanks.
Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause an aim placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda shall be taken out by city council immediately following the consent agenda unless otherwise provided by the city council of order.
The public hearings on agenda items number 15 through 18 were held on April 15th. Roll call.
Thompson, Gurnat, Gray, Jerem, Milton, Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
15 through 18 is passed, seven to zero. We're going to remove item number 24 from the resolution consent agenda.
Public hearings on agenda items number 19 through 23 and 25 through 30 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. See none. Public hearings are closed. Roll call.
Thompson, Gurnat, Gray, Jerem, Milton, Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
19 through 23 and 25 through 30 are adopted, seven to zero. Now, item number 24, resolution to nomination of John Parley Drive as a commemorative street name on Western Avenue between 74th Street and 74th Avenue is hereby approved.
Public hearing on number 24 is today. Proponents, please. Mr. Harrington, please come down. I wanted to give Mr. Harrington an opportunity to talk about this item today that we've worked together on with Creighton Prep. I know you're a prep alum and have kind of helped initiate this effort, which we think is very worthwhile, so please take a minute to explain what we're doing here.
I thank you for the opportunity to bring this matter to the council's attention. Let me give a little background that this incorporates much more than just naming of a street. About 18 months ago, a major donor came forward and proposed building a memorial on Prep's grounds to honor all those that have lost their life in conflict in behalf of the United States of America. In conjunction with that, I'm, first of all, my name is Gerald. I'm Harrington, 9615 Mockingbird Drive, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm the volunteer archivist at Prep. I was given the task of performing the search to find out everything you could find out about the men that were killed from World War I through the present wars in Afghanistan. During that time, the name of John Parle came forward as the only member of the group that lost their lives in that war, in the World War II, that won the Congressional Medal of Honor. When I came into the chambers, I read the plaque on Babe Gomez, and it was, the same concept that applied to that loss to our community applies to John Parle. John Parle was born in 1920, graduated from Prep in 1938, Creighton University in 1942, and went into the Navy and completed a ROTC program that made him an ensign and was then serving in the Mediterranean. He was killed on January, July 10th, 1943, and I think some of you are old enough to remember or know of Edward R. Merle. Some of those that are younger might know him from the movie that was made a few years back. In conjunction with a article that he wrote in the New York Times and was reprinted in the World Herald, I will give you a brief rundown of the details of John Parle's heroism. Quote, "Off the coast of Sicily last July 10th, John Parle again did what he was supposed to do and thereby perhaps saved the Sicilian invasion from disaster. It was 1:35 a.m. and black as pitch. The big landing ships were hove to off the coast of Sicily. LST, which is land sea transport, 365, on which John Parle was an ensign, had swung the smaller landing boats out on the davits, ready to lower into the water. Boat number five near the bridge was loaded with explosives. A smoke pot in boat five became ignited accidentally. Nobody was in the boat, but Ensign Parle was near. He jumped into the boat, put out the fuse, but the pot itself was still spurting flames, and at any moment it might set off explosives. Had the explosives gone off, the whole LST jammed with men would have gone up like a rocket, and even worse, the enemy on shore would have had two hours' warning that the invasion was coming. Ensign Parle wrestled with the smoke pot, finally hoisting it over the rail and into the water. The ship was saved, and so was the invasion. A week later, Ensign Parle died of burns and smoke inhalation in a hospital in Brazza." So that is it, and in a nutshell, as to the reason he was awarded the Congressional Medal of Honor. Two reasons are both important of why this commemoration of the street should be named. One is to remember the past. John Parle has been somewhat forgotten in the history of Omaha. His name is on the memorial at Memorial Park. The ROTC office at Creighton University is named after him, and therein sits the Congressional Medal of Honor that his family donated to Creighton. The second important point is John Parle did his duty. He is an epitome of a man of honor. Prep's motto and mission is to take young men and turn them into men for others. For our future students, long past I'm gone and you're gone, hopefully that memorial and the naming of the street in his behalf will be a reminder to students in the future that one man committed himself to faith, family, and his community. Any questions? That's my presentation, and I appreciate your attention to this.
Thank you. That was very well done, and as the council member for the district, I wholly support this. He's a great American hero and I think a great role model for the prep students. Every day they drive to school there to see what's sort of the curvy part of Western Street there is where this will be.
From parking lot to parking lot.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
And there's lots of cars that go in there, so it'll be an appropriate honor for a great American story and a great American hero. And now we plan to do a ceremony to a memorial day that I look forward to participating in as well. So thanks for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes, sir. If you could come back.
Sorry?
Thank you for not only honoring Mr. Parle, but honoring the fact that Creighton Prep does teach the men for others concept. And when I was teaching and being a counselor there, we even expanded it and had another saying, we called it brothers for others. And so I know up front and close what they do, and I know that the character of Mr. Parle wasn't by accident, it's by the outstanding job that they do at Prep. And just last week, I stopped by and visited, and they're just doing some wonderful things there. So thank you for remembering both this hero and the heroes at the school that keep cranking out dozens of heroes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other proponents today that want to speak? See none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Motion approved.
Second. Roll call.
Thompson, Gurnat, Gray, Jerem, Milton, Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted, seven to zero. Item number 31, resolution attached to Harney Street Department Tax Interfinancing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 3327 Harney Street for the redevelopment of a newly constructed apartment building consisting of approximately 31 market rate units and parking for tenants underneath the units, recommending the city participate through the allocation of TIF is hereby approved.
Public hearing on number 31 is today. Ms. Hadley, proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Bridgette Hadley, City Planning. Hopefully you can see this rendering. This is an aerial of the site as it currently stands. This is Harney, of course, 35th Street, and there are four lots here, or three houses, three or four, that are now vacant. This particular project supports the city's goal in revitalizing, redeveloping in communities, especially with infill housing. There were houses there that were on the code and code enforcement list, and this particular project serves to help by reducing the code enforcement list, helping improve the time that the city staff has to work on maybe other projects and redevelop this site into 32 apartment units, multifamily market rate units. Make sure I get the right one in front of me. There will be mostly one and two-bedroom units, and there will be garages underneath. Here is a elevation, and this is Harney Street, so this would be the entrance into the building from Harney Street where the garages are. We did sit with the urban design manager, Jeb Molten, to go over the materials, the design and layout, to make sure that it fit in with the neighborhood. I know that there were some concerns about a huge multifamily unit going in, but there are multifamily units right here. I think it may be a duplex, these may be duplexes, and then multifamily units here. So it isn't too obvious to have a multifamily in that area. And then, of course, directly to the north is the midtown crossing area. There's a parking garage and then the midtown crossing area. So this particular project, we feel like it does remove blight and substantial conditions from the area by demolishing four existing residential structures that were deteriorating and constructing the new family dwellings, multifamily dwellings. It also serves to reduce, as I had mentioned, the code enforcement list. The project plan makes marginal property a stronger asset and provides quality housing within the Leavenworth neighborhood, as well as helps to facilitate the provision of infill housing in the neighborhood. With that, I would ask for your approval.
Thank you. Other proponents today?
Good afternoon. Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. The only thing I would add is that you'll see this rezoning case coming before you. It goes to the planning board next month, and it'll be following this redevelopment plan, but it's being rezoned from R7 to R8 with a PUD and an ACI-1 overlay. So what you see is what you're going to get. It's also, of course, the urban design code kicks in with respect to the materials and everything else, and also pulling the building. You'll see this front stoop is actually partially in the right-of-way, so the building is pulled to the right-of-way, which is what we're looking for. And of course, access into the underground parking is here off Harney Street as well. So with that, I'm just happy to answer any questions, but you will see the rezoning coming down the road.
Thank you. Other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, Larry, if you could come back up. Did you state the total investment on this project?
I can tell you that. It is a total investment of $3,783,680, and the tax increment financing is up to $398,060.
So I just wanted Larry to take a minute to talk about what was there before in terms of some pretty old, not unattractive structures in terms of the history of Harney in Omaha and the evaluation that often happens spurred by the Midtown Crossing project is to whether those structures can be rehabilitated, whether the dollars and cents make investment sense in a commercial context, because I think we're going to be, as mutuals growth expands outward in concentric circles, this isn't the first time we're going to hear of projects that had taken code enforcement properties, properties where it didn't make financial sense to rehabilitate them, yet you're having in this case a nearly $4 million investment with a pretty, pretty good architectural style with the state-of-the-art materials, with the urban design standards. So Larry, you want to take a second to?
Well, yeah, I think what you had before this particular project was, came before you, is four very, very deteriorated, dilapidated structures that have now been removed from the site. And obviously, you know, with redevelopment, we always say development begets development, redevelopment begets development. Anytime you have a significant investment in the core of the city, I think that just adds more development and investment into the core of the city. Saw that with Urban Village. I think you saw that, of course, with Midtown Crossing. And so all of this is a good thing. I think this is exactly what we were all trying to accomplish when we were looking at the master plans and the urban design code and developing the whole Omaha by design concept of coming back into the city and making sure that buildings were done appropriately and properly. So I think this is a result of many years of planning, and we think it's a great project.
And in this particular case, you have a developer who primarily focuses on west Omaha developments where by many admissions, it's a lot easier, less challenging, less expensive per square foot to do the assemblage and your planning, who is now joining the people who have come to the Midtown Crossing area to invest and.
Right. This is their first redevelopment project inside the corporate limits of the city. Most of their other projects are all greenfield developments, SIDs, a lot of developments in Sarpy County as well, but this is their first time into the core of the city.
And I just, I bring this up because we will be hearing more cases, I suspect, in the near future of other projects, of which sometimes, I mean, these were, I think, brick in some cases, the houses that were there, and others that were wood-framed, that it just did not make financial sense, as old as they were and maybe as cool-looking some of them were, to be able to save them. But what you see here is, you know, a pretty neat development and making maximum use with underground parking and getting a pretty good addition to.
And then, of course, on Harney Street, adding the density to the transportation system as well for future mass transit-type opportunities. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson.
Just a quick statement to say that I'm all in favor of urban infill. I think the more we do that, the better Omaha will be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Second. Roll call.
Thompson, Gurnat, Gray, Jerem, Milton, Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted, seven to zero. Item number 32, resolution attached Stevens Center Tax Interfinancing Redevelopment Project Plan for the redevelopment project site located at 2723 Q Street for purpose of construction of 62 units of permanent supportive housing, which includes an emergency shelter in the basement, recommending the city participate through the allocation of TIF is hereby approved.
Public hearing on number 32 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Bridgette Hadley again. Before you, of course, is the Stevens Center TIF redevelopment project plan. And this particular, I think most people are familiar with the Stevens Center. It has served low and no-income populations through a combination of their emergency shelter and transitional living opportunities, as well as case management. So here is the entire site. This building is still existing. It's part of the administration, but this piece is where the new building will be, so 28th, 27th Q Street. And then here is a rendering or elevation, one elevation. Apologize, these are upside down. The total investment, just to get to that point right away, of this particular project will be about almost $10 million, $9,561,661 of investment into the South Omaha community at 27th and Q Street. The amount of the TIF is up to $600,000, and the purpose is to bring in 62 permanent supportive housing units. And then in the basement of this building will be the emergency shelter, which is going to be leasing a space. So it serves definitely to promote revitalization and redevelopment in that community, reinvestment as well in that particular community, helping that population by providing the services they need, as well as housing on-site to allow them to become more engaged in the community as well. So we'll have one to two and three bedrooms, a total of 40 single-room occupancy units for individuals, and then 14 one-bedrooms, two one, excuse me, 14 one-bedrooms with small family units, two one-bedroom units, four two-bedroom units, and then three, or two three-bedroom units, as well as a manager's unit. I know we have a representative of the developer here that may want to share a little bit of information, but we do feel like this is a great opportunity for South Omaha. It definitely serves to support the. It definitely serves to support the master plan elements, it serves to support the South Omaha neighborhood revitalization strategic area in terms of providing quality, affordable housing to low-income populations and the supportive services which will lead to employment opportunities. And with that, I would like to ask for your approval.
Thank you. Any other proponents today?
Dell Bomberger, CEO of Stevens Center, 2715 Q Street, just here to thank you for your consideration to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Bomberger.
Hi, my name is Carrie June, 6732 North 104th here in Omaha. I'm with the developer, and I can answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Gurnett?
Thank you, Mr. President, Dell. Would you come back up? Waiting a long time, huh?
It's been a while, yeah.
It's been quite a while, hasn't it?
It has, but getting there.
I remember the days when we were wondering how, if this would ever come about due to the fact that acquiring properties was somewhat difficult.
It was a challenge, but we got it, Doug.
Yes, but the model that the Stevens Center uses has been very, very successful, and the expansion of that model with and in use of this facility is going to be a valuable asset to the entire community, entire city for that matter. Just give us a small snapshot, if you will, of the capabilities of what this is going to bring, not only to South Omaha, but to the city at large.
All right. Well, one of the things we see as homeless providers is generational families coming through time after time after time, and drugs and alcohol are often a common thread, not always, but a great percentage of the time. That and mental illness, about seventy-five percent of the people who come to us are on some kind of a mental health medication at the time they arrive. So between those two, there's big challenges, and what we have done is to replace our old shelter that was in operation for thirty years, but we really outgrown that. But really what we're trying to do is to provide an environment where families can come that will enable kids to grow up in a facility where drugs and alcohol just aren't the norm, where your neighbors aren't doing it, where it's unusual and doesn't happen without consequences, and we hope to kind of break the cycle of homelessness with that. But the other great thing, in addition to our hero program, which provides residential treatment for individuals, many people don't come to treatment who would like to because they have jobs and they can't, particularly in the case of women, don't have childcare and don't want to risk giving up the kids for an extended period of time. So people can come and move into this new facility and pay very, very affordable rents, have lots of supportive services, but they'll be able to get the same, on an intensive outpatient basis, the same high-level drug treatment that you would get if you went to an inpatient, but we'll be able to work around their schedules, families will stay intact, and we think it'll be a good model for everybody. We're confident it's going to make a big difference.
The program is a success. I can't say enough positive things about it. Being able to watch the growth of the Stevens Center and what it has done for the community, what it has done for the city, and now an opportunity to have another new addition is just awesome. I can't say enough about it, but I do want to say personally, thank you for involving me in the groundbreaking of this new facility and allowing me to get up on that excavator and tear down that building. That was fun.
It was good for all of us. Thank you.
Dr. Demo got a chance to do his thing. Wish you all the best, and I would make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Yes, sir? Just wanted to say a thank you for all that you do for the community and the same things that you do to bless others. I'd like to say publicly that I want the Lord to bless you too.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mr. Pauls?
Yes, I have a question. What caught my attention, and I'm just doing this, you're saying seventy-five percent of the people who happen to use your services are in need of mental health?
Correct. They already have a diagnosis and are on medications. We think that a good portion of the remaining twenty-five percent should also be, so that's a major complication for everything that we do.
So in many ways, you're really a mental health institution.
Absolutely.
Which we, a number of years ago, said we didn't need.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Motion, a second? Roll call.
Thompson, Gurnett, Gray, Jerem, Milton, Pauls. Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted, seven to zero. We're going to bring up item number forty-three. That's additional resolution. Forty-three, resolution that the bid from Lawn Smith and Company is to provide, to construct and install new park signs in the Omaha Parks and Trails is hereby accepted.
Public hearing on number forty-three is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Thompson, Gurnett, Gray, Jerem, Milton, Pauls. Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted, seven to zero. Pursuant City Council Rule Seventy, the public hearing on agenda items number thirty-three through thirty-six shall be held on a third reading. Item number thirty-seven is an ordinance on second reading, ordinance to amend official logs, records, and plats in the City of Omaha in changing the street names for streets in the Indian Creek area.
Public hearing on number thirty-seven is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item number thirty-eight, ordinance approving three individual agreements for various farm operators within Cass and Worceon County, what these operators will receive and land apply stabilized sewage sludge.
Public hearing on number thirty-eight is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item number thirty-nine, ordinance to accept the bid of FPG Service Corporation to provide janitorial service at the Public Safety Training Facility for a three-year period.
Public hearing on number thirty-nine is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Pursuant City Council Rule Seven, see the public hearing on agenda item number forty through forty-two shall be held on the second reading.
Roll call.
Thompson, Gurnett, Gray, Jerem, Milton, Pauls. Mr. President?
Yes.
Two thirty-seven.